Good evening and welcome to tonight's work session. Today is Tuesday, July 17, 2018, 10:00 now, 5:00 PM. The work session will now come to order. I have two items on the agenda tonight, we'll see if we can get to the second one, but I don't know if we will. Line number one, La Puerta Development Funding Request. Who is going to start off?
Hiya. Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Gina Chaimino. I am President of Mont Carmel of Colorado, which includes health and wellness, Mont Carmel Health and Wellness here in Trinidad, and then we have another center in Colorado Springs dealing with veterans transitioning. I'm also President of Kip Hamden Properties. We are responsible for the development that's being happening here in Trinidad. I have a group with me tonight. Let's see, Grant Bennett, who is Principal of Proximity Green. He's a real estate developer and a finance specialist. Also Rick Crone, who is a partner at Spencer Fain, and he's been working on special districts and business districts for 31 years. And then someone that everybody knows well is Si Michaels. She will also speak on that. So, you know, just a little bit of history here. You all know that my family roots are here in Trinidad. My parents were born and raised. We still have family here. And, you know, it was always their passion to be able to help the community and give back. You know, starting 11 years ago, you know, they purchased the church, they renovated the church without knowing what they were going to do with it. And it just happened that the need was healthcare. And so we ended up getting into healthcare. So, that was 11 years ago. We, once we renovated that church and we, you know, we, it was our real estate company that funded that $12 million project. We decided to convey that to our nonprofit, because Mont Carmel is a nonprofit. And so we basically conveyed that church and what Mont Carmel does for this community to the nonprofit. So, it's not an asset of ours. It is run by its Board of Managers, and it's a community asset. So, that began our work 11 years ago. That was in 2007. Around that same time, we started slowly acquiring the 15 acres of land from the railroad, which we refer to that land now as La Puerta Bay, Colorado. We also, at the same time, were acquiring several acres on the south side of the river, which is now home of the Land Toyota. Roughly five years ago, we announced our plans for La Puerta. It was a vision. You know, they weren't solid plans, it was just really a vision. But we, one thing we did know is that by developing a critical mass off I-25, with three and a half million cars a year traveling, we can draw people not only into La Puerta, and what that's going to mean, but also, you know, into the town. So, over the years, we've been working with city and state agencies, consultants, some of which are going to hear from tonight, engineers, architects, to bring this vision to a reality. To date, we've worked with the city and DOLA to build the Cedar Street. You know, Toyota was completed almost a year ago. And, you know, right now, we're driving double the amount of sales and service customers into that Toyota store and into the downtown. So, we knew, we fought hard to keep Toyota here, and it was tough. I mean, at one point, it looked like we needed to send it to Alamosa. And probably any business person would have done that, because it just made business sense to do that. But, you know, my dad in particular was very passionate about helping this downtown area, and he did everything in his power to keep it here. So, La Puerta. La Puerta will serve as a magnet to get people off the interstate and into the downtown. The development will become home of the Purple Toe, which is a social tap and grill, a Hilton Garden Inn, which is a 100-plus-room hotel, four restaurant pad sites, two retail pad sites, Trinidad Welcome Center, the Americana immersive theater experience, an amphitheater, and Tubing on the River. All on those 15 acres. Up the street, on commercial, you'll find Marty Feeds in the bank building and Sister Blandina Plaza. Now Marty Feeds will soon be called the Marketplace, which is a fancy word for a food hall. And different food vendors will call that home. And also Bull Academy is upstairs too. Those are our plans, is to bring in more retail food. The bank building will house the urgent care. There's not an urgent care in Trinidad. It'll be an urgent care, and the upstairs will either be office space, residential, and potentially additional restaurant site. Sister Blandina Plaza will soon be a park that residents can enjoy. But in the future, the park will serve as the entrance to a boutique hotel, which is the Snyder Brewery. This park will be our hallmark project honoring Sister Blandina. So, really, our vision upon completion of all of these projects is to help bring the spirit of Trinidad back to the vibrant stage that it was, you know, 70 years ago. And we're passionate about doing that. So, thank you for hearing us tonight. Oh, I almost forgot. These, this, oh sure. So, this is information that you can read and study. It really outlines our projects in depth. You know, I just, I basically gave you the overview, but this will give you more information. And if you have any questions, you know, I'm happy to give you my contact information, and I'm happy to take your calls.
One more of these?
Oh, one more, sure.
Thank you, Gina. Hey, can we have one for the record, please?
Sure. I have plenty. I'd be happy to share.
Those are the essential, people, thank you.
Okay, so now, then introduce Grant Bennett with Principal of Proximity Green.
Yeah, sure. Hi, I'm Grant, Grant Bennett.
The podium is adjustable if you would like to pick it up.
Fancy. All right. How's that? Better?
It's okay for you?
Yeah, all right. Let's see here. I might as well, so not to overwhelm you with more information, but this figure is a blown-up sightpan of La Puerta with color. It's not always impressive speaking. And it's also a good visual reference. I'm not going to delve too much more into the La Puerta project. Gina did a great job. But I'll first start by saying that Grant Bennett, I work in real estate financing development. I worked for Denver's Urban Renewal Authority for six years during the financial downturn. It was a good time to learn. It wasn't a lot of jobs. So, it was a good time to get an education. And I've had the pleasure of thinking about financial opportunities and challenges with pretty dynamic real estate projects around the state of Colorado over the last six years of running my own firm. And then a career in engineering before Urban Renewal, and then a period in Urban Renewal. They're all six-year careers, so I might have been the end of this one, but we'll come back to that one later. So, with all real estate projects, opportunities, sometimes they're pretty straightforward. A lot of people have purchased a home before, and it's, you get a mortgage, right? I've got an amount of equity, I put the money down, I get a bank loan. The federal government has been so kind to subsidize mortgages for entry-level buyers and even affluent buyers, and our mortgage business keeps the housing market afloat. When you move into commercial real estate, it gets just a bit more complicated, and sometimes it's as simple as equity and debt. And oftentimes, especially when it comes to thinking about things that are dynamic, it involves a lot more than just equity and debt. And that's where I find myself in the world of talking to people about how projects can help come together. And so, with that, I started working with the downtown Trinidad Development Group back in the summer of 2016 with previous staff members and the current staff members, thinking about the dynamic opportunity for this project site. It's pretty awesome in the sense that you're capturing, you can capture more visitors to downtown. I shamelessly sometimes wear the hat of economic development and think about the right kind of growth opportunities. I don't necessarily just think growth for growth's sake. I started my career in civil engineering and did not like doing paving plans for 7-Elevens in the suburbs. It was not really exciting to me. I like thinking about things that create community change, and got pretty excited about river activation and a retail project. And a lot of the things that are happening and proposed as part of the La Puerta plan, including land development challenges. I spent years, six years in the urban renewal world, thinking about blight. The La Puerta site has extraordinary challenges in terms of raising the flood plain, environmental contamination that needs to be remediated. It's got historic buildings that are going to be adaptively reused. It's got new construction opportunities, and those are not cheap. Everything costs money, land development, especially fancy roads and curves and gutter, take money. And across the state of Colorado, people are using financing tools to help think about that that are enabled by city councils and county commissioners and lots of different agencies that have sort of funding buckets. Doesn't necessarily cost the city. It doesn't necessarily cost, it's tapping into that resource. And we'll delve into a few now as part of the request that we submitted after many, many months of work and years of work, talking to city staff. We submitted a request in May to say, hey, could we access some of these tools and think about this site? And all of that, on the heels of thinking about other opportunities, we've applied for, in cooperation with city staff, two Colorado Department of Transportation Faster Grants for a proposed multimodal site at La Puerta that would enable using transit money to bring buses and transit activity to the La Puerta site. I'm currently assisting the city in drafting a grant proposal for the sewer outfall that would serve a third of the city. Mike Valentine and Tara and Greg can expand on that. But there's a grant available from the US Department of Commerce whereby, US Department of Commerce Economic Development Agency, Administration, EDA, that grant enables infrastructure to be paid for if you bring jobs. Conveniently, the La Puerta project is proposing to bring a 101-room hotel, as shown on this diagram, that would create new jobs. And in working with the EDA Administrator based in Denver, they said, well, that would be a great project if you could bring it. What do you need to do that? And they said, well, we need to pay for a $2.8 million sewer outfall. And he said, well, I've got a grant for that. And the EDA could pay for half of, it's based on the type of project and the qualification matrix. If approved, they could pay for, I guess our budget estimate is, depending on which realm of conservatism you want to live in, 2.8 to $3 million. Half of that would be up to $1.5 million that the federal government could pay for. While it pays for the infrastructure, that sewer outfall, you have to bring jobs. That is a core requirement to land the EDA grant. But for the jobs, you don't get the money. So, there are a number of but-for arguments in the world of public-private partnerships, federal government, local government, that sort of this, you have to meet it test. And so the EDA opportunity is one we're very excited about. I know Mr. Sun and Mrs. Marshall have, with me, been on the phone and met with the EDA representative. He's very excited about our proposal that's in the finishing stages. But all the while, you know, the real picture has been, how do we enable this site and this vision forward? Other funding opportunities that have been successful, and largely to the credit of city staff, but also in partnership with the development team, has been the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs, DOLA funding. There's a ready grant that was enabled to get the design of the sewer outfall done that was used with a match of private developer dollars that was paid for by the developers to design Americana Road. So, there had to be a local match. Right now, and I defer to Mr. Sun, but I think he made a presentation to DOLA for an infrastructure grant recently to fund Americana Road, or if not, it's coming up tomorrow. So, good luck. So, all the while, it's now been transferred, the wand has been handed over, and he's running with it for funding Americana Road with some state money. All of which is to say, I think if it was easy and straightforward, no developer that I've ever known would just go through some of the headache that's required to get this kind of public funding, right? If we could just pay for Americana Road and it be done, if we were in the weed business and we could just build ourselves a nice metal building with really cheap facade, no offense to building department officials here, but it seems that the weed industry is not as concerned with aesthetics as they are with the product they're pushing. You know, that that level of quality of building takes money. And so it's not as easy and straightforward as maybe the armchair quarterbacks would like to take. And so I've spent many a days on projects, never coming out of the ground. If I could average with less zeros, I'd probably be retired by now. And I'm pretty young. So, I've got a few zeros on my resume that, you know, not for hard work and lack of trying, but just some projects that have come together. And all the while, it seems like there's a lot of energy and excitement building around activity in downtown Trinidad, the funding opportunities that we've chased. And so entered the request provided to the city in May that said, hey, can we enable some public funding tools, authorized by state statute largely. I defer to the lawyer, who's going to be coming up next. Rick can actually speak to, I'm not a lawyer, I play one on TV. Is this being recorded? All right, good. But all the while, these funding tools have been enabled by the state of Colorado. And they're really tools that can benefit a city and a town in thinking about, how can we bring this revenue that otherwise wouldn't exist if the development didn't get built for a project that has mutually aligned goals? And then one of the next questions that get asked is, what's the risk to the city? I used to work for an Urban Renewal Authority and Agency, the City of Miami, Denver, and that was a question we asked every single day. What is the risk facing the city? How can we minimize that risk? And I think a key piece of the proposal put forward is that we are, the development group is not asking for the city to bond against these revenues. There's no borrowing risk to the city being proposed. It is simply an enabling of these various revenue mechanisms, tax increment financing, a sales tax rebate, a business improvement district, and we'll get into the nuances. I know there's been discussion about a general improvement district, I defer to the lawyer on those specifically, and a public improvement fee. What does that mean? It means we use urban renewal statutes and a tax overlay, the developer taxing them themselves and their project, to create a revenue stream. It's just money in the future we can't touch now. The developer is willing to take the risk in borrowing that future revenue stream to enable the picture you see before you here. So, the goal at the table, and this conversation happened over years, was how do we minimize the risk to the city while still enabling these tools? So, I've quickly hit on those tools, and we could delve down into the nuances of each one. I run a spreadsheet and know how to work with pro forma and talk about the mathematical equations. And sometimes I get it right, and sometimes an assessor tells me, well, you know, this is, you know, carry the comment here. It's never that, actually, I'm not that bad. But there's all these nuances behind it written in the laws. And it really boils down to this, which is that without this project, those revenues don't exist. So, our case here for the project, at a fundamental level, is we're hoping to tax ourselves and use urban renewal mechanisms to help benefit infrastructure costs and extraordinary burdens for this project. I think one final piece is that we've been talking about a tool in specifics, a business improvement district. The city has suggested we also look at a general improvement district. The lawyer's going to speak to that. But there's an urgency with an election cycle, what's called a Tabor election, to put that on the ballot and let the voters, i.e. the property owner, vote to tax themselves coming up here for this next election cycle. And if that window passes, we have to wait another year, which means waiting another year to borrow those revenues at the developer's risk for that consideration. So, with that, thank you for hearing me out in really the case before us that we submitted in May and your consideration. And I will pass the mic to Rick Crone, who's a lawyer with Spencer Fain, and let him introduce his background and his work and his thoughts. Questions? Thank you. Okay.
I think we're close enough to the same height, they don't have to adjust the podium. I'm Rick Crone, I'm a partner in the law firm at Spencer Fain, which is based out of Kansas City. He's located in about 10 states in the midwestern portion of the country. We have two offices in Colorado, one in Denver, one in Colorado Springs. The development team engaged me to come and help explain some of the financing tools, in particular, business improvement districts, general improvement districts, and to kind of go through some of the similarities and differences between the two. Also, explain why this is not Cougar Canyon, which it's not, and explain why we are asking for what we're asking for in terms of the district. All right, address the facts, the common features of BIDs, the general improvement districts. All right, both are financing tools. They both are used to finance infrastructure. There are 55 BIDs in the state. There are approximately that same number of GIDs. They're both units of local government without all the powers. So, for example, the city has got, you know, the police power, and your planning and zoning and all this stuff. Now, the BIDs and GIDs for that matter are pretty much go build it, go take care of it entities. The BIDs also have the feature of being able to do marketing for the local area. Let's see, both have to have open meetings, they have to have open records, they both have to adopt annual budgets, they both have to do audits or go get an audit exemption from the state, very similar to a lot of the things you do here in the city. They both can provide public improvements, roads, water, sewer, parks, and everything else that might be needed for a new development. They can finance those, they can build them, they can operate them. Let's see, they both have the power to charge fees for services, use property taxes, accept grants, and use special assessments.
Can you say that little spiel one last time? They can assess?
They can assess fees for services. The one I always like to mention is something like a paddle boat. Let's say you have a small pond, and you want to have paddle boats out there. They can charge fees to people to use those paddle boats, for example. They can impose property taxes. Assuming they've got the authority to do it, both the organizing documents, which is an ordinance that would be adopted by this council, and pass a Tabor election. They can accept grants. They can issue debt. In this case, it's going to be notes, as I understand it, to the developer or developer entities. And they can use special assessments, which can be charges on a front-footage basis, for example, or an area basis, for example. This is a reference to work. What's being proposed here is to use limited property taxes as the primary financing mechanism for the district.
So, basically, they can impose a separate tax upon their inhabitants of that district?
Within their area, yes. Business improvement, there's a difference, and I'll go into this. There's a difference between a GID and a BID though. And then a BID can only tax commercial properties.
And that's a business improvement district, correct?
That's correct. And the GID, which is a general improvement district, is residential, commercial, whatever's in there. So, it's a key difference, actually. And for downtown areas, for example, it's a huge difference.
And I guess they're run by a board that would select not just an arbitrary number for their tax increments, but they would have to go off of some type of a formula in order to assess this tax?
Well, the tax would be assessed just like a city property tax, for example. A number of mils would be set. The value of the property would be determined by the county assessor, just like in the state, or the fire district or what have you. Their ambulance district, for that matter, is the same way.
But I'm saying their board would actually vote on a number, like we would vote for our number for our community?
That's right. You would, in the organizing documents, the organizing ordinance, along with an annual operating plan that comes back to this council, and then in the election question, they would do a maximum number of mils allowed. In this case, they're looking for 40, 35 for debt, 5 for operations. They can't go over that without another election, without your approval, without the BID board's approval. Now, there's one exception, and that is if you have a change in the way that the assessed values are determined. But in commercial property, that's unlikely, because you have to change in the constitution. Are you going to do that? Or figuring that's not terribly likely to happen, we'll write it into the documents, but it's unlikely. So, the BID basically is the area of La Puerta, there's no, so it makes more sense than rather than a general improvement district, because there is no housing in there, correct? That's the reason, pretty much the reason. That's part of it. There are some other things to go into, but yes, that's a primary reason. Let's see, Tabor election is needed in both for revenue spending limits and debt and taxes. And again, the voting party is going to be the people that vote for it. All right, key differences between a business improvement district and a general improvement district. All right, first of all, the governing body. Who's in charge? All right, in the business improvement district, the bid board is appointed by city council in almost every case, and in this case, that's what we're proposing. So, the bid board, appointed by city council. It is possible to have a member of city council on that board, along with a member of the municipal authority. Again, if you want it to be that way, and I'm assuming that you do. In a general improvement district, the city council's the board. So, the city council acts as that board. We'd have separate meetings with the GID, probably at the same time as you have your council meetings, but you would be doing everything. All right, in terms of improvements in services, the BID can provide capital improvements and maintenance and the business-related services, business promotion and marketing, that kinds of thing. The GID is really for capital improvements and the maintenance, and really doesn't have that business aspect, that business promotional type estimate, which can be a big deal in some of these districts. The taxpayers. In a BID, it's only the commercial properties, period. The assessor, and that's as determined by the assessor. What's a commercial property, the assessor tells you. It's basically not a residential property and not an agricultural property, since it's pretty much everything else. But the assessor makes that determination, not the district. All right, in the GID, all the property in the GID, whether it's residential or commercial or whatever, is subject to that GID tax. Now, what happens down the road? If you have a property here that was commercial and it changes to residential? Nobody's expecting that to happen. Nobody's proposing that. But, you know, you never know. We're talking about a long-term deal. What if it changes to residential? It drops out of the tax base of a business improvement district. It does not drop out of the tax base of a GID. Huge difference. Okay, the organizational procedure on BID. There's a petition from the landowner that will come to you. And as Grant mentioned, we've got to get that petition to you right away, or we will miss the opportunity. Now, there's one exception, and that is if you have a change in the way that the assessed values are determined. But in commercial property, that's unlikely because you have to change in the constitution, are you gonna do that? Or figuring that's not terribly likely to happen, we'll write it into the documents, but it's unlikely. So the BID basically is the area of La Puerta, there's no, so it makes more sense than rather than a general improvement district because there is no, uh, housing in there, correct?
That's right.
That's the reason, pretty much the reason.
That's part of it, there's some other things to it I'm going to, but yes, that's a primary reason. Uh, let's see, Tabor election is needed in both for revenue spending limits and debt and taxes. So, and again, the voting party is going to be the people of the developer. All right, key differences between the business improvement district and a general improvement district. All right, first of all, the governing body, who's in charge? All right, in the business improvement district, the bid board is appointed by city council in almost every case, and in this case, that's what we're proposing. So the bid board appointed by city council. It is possible to have a member of city council on that board, along with a member of the, of the renewal authority, Tora. Again, if you want it to be that way, and I'm assuming that you do. In a general improvement district, the city council's the board. So the city council accesses that board, would have separate meetings to the GID, probably at the same time as you have your council meetings, but you would be doing everything. All right, in terms of improvements in services, the BID can provide capital improvements and maintenance and the business-related services, business promotion and marketing, that kinds of thing. Um, the GID is really for capital improvements and the maintenance, really doesn't have that business aspect, that business promotional type estimate, which can be a big deal in some of these districts. The taxpayers, in a BID, it's only the commercial properties, period. The assessor, and that's as determined by the assessor. What's a commercial property, the assessor tells you. It's basically not a residential property and not an agricultural property, since it's pretty much everything else. But the assessor makes that determination, not the district. All right, and the GID, all the property in the GID, whether it's residential or commercial or whatever, is subject to that GID tax. Now what happens down the road? If you had a property here that was commercial and it changes to residential, nobody's expecting that to happen, nobody's proposing that, but, you know, you never know. We're talking about a long-term deal. What if it changes to residential? It drops out of the tax base of a business improvement district. It does not drop out of the tax base of a GID. Huge difference. Okay, the organizational procedure on BID, there's a petition from the landowner, they'll come to you. And as Grant mentioned, we've gotta get that petition to you right away or we will miss the November election. So I see that as a priority, we'll get that to you right away. There's public notice that's published in the newspaper, sent to the property owner, that's, could be an easy job. And the city council holds a public hearing, and you would adopt an ordinance. The ordinance creates the business improvement district, appoints the, will have it also appoint that board and allow for the election in November. So it'll be a multi-purpose ordinance, it'll be fairly straightforward, I think, your three counsel have no trouble going through this thing. And a GID, very similar, landowner petition, there's a public notice, the city council, uh, multi-hearing. Then an election afterwards in November actually authorizes the creation of the district. It's a little different because you have that election in public, the GID, not the BID, which are BIDs of asset.
And are you hoping to attain both of these districts?
No, we're only looking for BID.
Okay.
But we were asked to contri- con- uh, to compare the two, so that's basically what I'm doing. The BID is where we really wanted to go with this.
And I have a question for you again.
Yeah.
So when these, say this goes through, and our county clerk and recorder's office is the one collecting these taxes, if you will, do they go back to the BID directly, or do they disperse them throughout the county?
No, well, the county treasurer would be the collection agent.
Correct.
So same as all the rest of the property taxes. They go back to the BID, uh, generally by wire transfer to the bank. On a BID account, they don't go to anything but the BID. And then the BID uses those monies for paying its debt, paying for its operations and all that. There is an annual budget that has to be approved. This council looks at that annual budget before approval, each year. And that's mandated by, that's, we're not making that up, that's in statute.
So if I can just put this in layman's terms, it's almost like having its own HOA, except it's a tax mill that goes through our county and comes back to itself, which is paid by the property owner, which in this case would be Kip Hampton Development to its subsidiaries.
And whoever owns the property down the, down the road.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
So yeah, it's similar in some ways.
Can you draw into greater detail about how the BID, how they interact with Tora?
Sure, I could, yeah. And basically, they're two overlapping entities. So Tora is going to be collecting the tax increment, that's the additional taxes from growth out there. Uh, Tora is, let's see, I'm trying to think of what I know, what did the, is Tora actually, I'm gonna ask my question. Is Tora getting the money from the BID and the BID spending it, or is Tora spending the money directly? Ready to have the development?
Not to be the lawyer, but I think that would be figured out through a cooperation agreement where we, just hoping that we would have a green light to say, let's work on that challenge.
Okay. So yeah, I think to be determined between Tora and the district. District couldn't force Tora to do anything, so the governmental agreement between the two.
Okay, seems like not a lot of time left.
Well, yes, well, not a lot of time left to negotiate those details, that's right. But as far as getting the district off the ground, that you can do pretty quickly. So I'll explain that in a minute too.
Fair enough.
All right, so, again, to go back to my contrasting thing. All right, under the business improvement district, there's a mandatory requirement that they bring an annual plan back to you with the budget, that is to be filed by September thirtieth of each year, and to be approved by December fifth. You can ask for additional information if you don't think they gave you enough on their first admission. And it can be this back and forth between you as the council and the bid board to get a product earmarked. In the GID, typically, the plan's set at the beginning, there's usually an annual budget review, and it's approved by city council acting as the board of the BID, of the GID. So that's a different thing, there is not that separate board in there working on it. So the level of council involvement in a BID, you're looking at that annual operating plan and budget. You're approving that, usually by resolution, it can be by ordinance, up to you. The city council acting as the GID is making all the decisions in the GID, which means a much heavier level of involvement on your part. It also means that you're really reacting kind of almost as a co-developer, maybe on these decisions. And the timing is always critical, all this stuff. So, part of the reason why I'd like to advocate for the BID is it can turn things around faster, particularly than can be done otherwise. All right, questions?
So on the BID board itself, in your experience, have you ever seen people in the district be on the board itself, or is it typically people outside of the district?
Well, let's see, it depends on the district. Um, ev- whoever is going to be on this board has to have an interest in the property, or be a resident out there, and it may be residents of this BID, let's face it. The interest in the property is typically done by leases, or it can be designated by a commercial entity that owns property. So let's say La Puerta LLC wants to designate somebody to be its representative to the board. It can do that, it has to be in writing, it's out of the district, so you know who the designated people are. But a person with a lease can also be eligible to be on the board. So my suspicion is, my thought is, that when we're looking at putting a city council person on the board, what will happen is the La Puerta owners will probably lease you a parking space. And you'll have your own parking space out there, and therefore, you, if you qualify to be on this board, you would then be appointed by the rest of council to be a member of the board. Same thing with Tora, we probably put together a lease of a parking space through one of their more members, we'd appoint the non-nitby.
So they can do that with every board member, then, as long as they have a leased parking spot, they could be on that board, you're saying?
For example, or, again, a commercial entity that owns or leases property out there.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, that board could be seated if how many people there are at leased parking spots?
That's possible, yes, of course, you're doing the appointments. These boards are typically five to seven people, by the way, I anticipate this one being five, simply because it's a lot easier to run a five-member board than seven.
From what you've seen in the past, how many of these BID boards have the council members, a council member on?
That's fairly rare. The, uh, BID in Blackhawk does. Um, actually, no, they've got a complimentary, uh, special district that's up there. The mayor attends all the board meetings, so he's got a lot of influence, needless to say, on the app and theory, I don't believe he's formerly a member of the board. But, you know, it's not a problem to be able to do it.
I have one last question for you.
Uh-huh.
Um, I understand that the Urban Renewal Authority's been mentioned quite a bit, and for those people who are at home watching this, what is the importance and relevance of having the Urban Renewal Authority as partnering with this endeavor?
Primarily coordination activities. Um, in other words, what the Urban Renewal Authority's doing and the BID is doing, the developer's doing, all need to come together and all make this a successful project, just in general. Um, second, as far as the, the financing of the, of the project, having representatives of everybody, I think, makes it so you're able to talk to them and make sure you get things, again, all on the same page. Do we actually have to have them? Probably not, but the fact is, I would think that Tora would be considerably more comfortable having somebody at the table there as a voted member, as opposed to somebody who's able to do that. That's my opinion.
Now, the, it has to go before the, before the citizens for approval, correct?
Well, it goes before this board for the creation of the district, of the BID. And then the vote is of the property owners in that area, not, okay, it's not a citywide. And again, the, the taxes and the financial, in fact, are all there, so it's not a citywide financial.
And what is the timeframe in order to get this all orchestrated, in order to get on, you know, preemptively done before the ballot come November?
We've really gotta have our material into you for approval in August, and as I understand, you've got two meetings in August, is that right? Second meeting in August would be looking for approval.
So you're looking at a month out?
Yeah. Yeah. Is it absolutely crucial, could we run it in September, yeah, if we had to, the point we could have had?
Isn't it odd that this sign in May that we haven't, y'all already hashed out with? Tora and then coming to us, and wouldn't that have put us much further ahead instead of a little time crunch going here? I mean, don't we have the cart in front of the horse a little here?
Well, I don't think so. And part of the reason is the planning for this, as I understand it, has been going on for pretty much a decade. Um, could we, could our timing have been better? Yeah, probably could have been. But the fact is that numbers have been being crunched all the way up until now, last week, to make sure that everything will work, and this is a multimillion dollar finding, so we wanna make sure we've got it right as far as having the numbers put together. And so, yes, we're coming to you somewhat maybe late in the process, but at the same time, I think we're coming to you and will have a much more solid proposal because of it. Okay, you tried to talk about one, this isn't Cougar Canyon. Oh, we can worship the elephant under the tail, I'm just leaving there, you know? All right, well, first of all, Cougar Canyon is obviously out there. This is next to your established downtown, in your established downtown. Commercial is already there, and this is just a different deal, when you're talking about out there as opposed to right here. Uh, second, the project next, Cougar Canyon is residential and commercial, the residents end up getting taxed, as you know, they're not particularly happy about that. Uh, and look right, that it's all commercial, considerably different emotional view of things in general. Also, a, I would believe, uh, group that is more familiar with these mechanisms and that are able to evaluate them. Uh, the structure, the other one, the Cougar Canyon was met all the district with elected board. This is a BID with an appointed board, appointed by you, so he knows on there. On top of that, you've got to be able to remove board members with this, if you didn't in Cougar Canyon. All right, uh, that's the governing document, there's a service plan that was done for Cougar Canyon, there's, in most service plans, you never have to come back to city council about any of that. And a BID are mandated, mandated by law to come back each year with that operating plan and budget. They'll be back here at least once a year. Uh, property tax limits, Cougar Canyon, this is, I understand, minimum forty-two, maximum fifty-five, plus operations on top of that. This was a maximum of forty mils being proposed. Um, again, adjusted for galler amendment, it's, I think, likelihood of that when you're looking at a completely commercial project is very low. So that'd be a constitutional amendment, there'd be a galler adjustment. Uh, let's see, city infrastructure, the city built a water line for Cougar Canyon at great cost, which I know you're all familiar with. Here you're looking at the infrastructure financed by the new development, and that sewer line replacement, you need it anyway, it serves a third of the segment. Uh, let's see, the unexpected factors, the real problem that happened with Cougar Canyon, as I understand it, and I'm one step away, maybe two or three steps away, is that the real problem that they had is the inability to refinance the whole task of the construction. That was really a recession factor, one that perhaps mismanagement in there as well, they just couldn't get it done. Here, if the economy softens, the risk is on the developer because it involves a cash flow financing, which means that if money's not there, the bondholder takes the risk. The bondholder here is the developer and developer-related entities, I don't think that's gonna be near the point.
Is that gonna be recourse to the developer or just completely non-recourse?
Uh, it's been non-recourse as far as what you're arguing, but does the developer guarantee the bonds? The answer's no, the reason for that is if you have a developer guarantee, you can't use taxes after that. All right, examples of BIDs, just real quick, because I know you've heard of all these. Downtown Denver Business Improvement District, biggest one in the state in terms of dollars. They do sidewalks, streetscape, flowers, landscaping, clean and safe, promotions, and just about a ton of other stuff. So Downtown Denver, the Sixteenth Street Mall is a BID. The relatively new one is the Rhino BID, River North Neighborhood. They are trying to be, well, they've already done bike lanes. I don't know if you've seen the bike lanes in Rhino, that they're little rhinoceroses on the bicycles, it's really pretty funny. Anyway, the BID paid for those, the city put them in, and it's all ordered in by the city, Public Works Department. So there's been bike lanes, marketing, care of the pedestrian bridge to go over the flood rivers, not there yet, but we're working on that. Um, you know, generally landscaping and all that. Cherry Creek North has got a business improvement district, does landscaping, marketing, clean and safe programs. Fiddler's Business Improvement District, where Fiddler's Green is, the amphitheater's actually not in the district, but you know there's this huge parking garage there, that's owned by the Business Improvement District and maintained and operated by that BID. Um, they also have the Park Gallery on the first quarter of the Plots of Verity building, which is open to the public, so probably. All right, High Line BID is on Broadway, it's west of I twenty-five, it's in, um, Littleton. It does, it's got traffic signals, it put in the roads, it put in utilities for a commercial development there, it's a office park. Park Meadows has a business improvement district. Park Meadows put in parking, it put in a police substation out there, landscaping, a number of pedestrian amenities. Miller's Landing BID, this one's new, uh, this is in Southern Castle Rock. They're doing roads, water, sewer, environmental cleanup of the dump there, it's off the Plum Creek Parkway. Nothing's there yet, I mean, you really can't see anything, I don't think anything's been built yet, but it's been put in place and they're gonna use the BID. Similar to this one as far as the general, uh, building of all the infrastructure. I got ten different locations in Colorado Springs that I could list for you, but they have such wonderful names, I can't understand. Barnes and Powers North, Barnes and Powers South, First Main, First Main North, First Main, North Number Two, Interquest South, Interquest North, Powers and Whitman, Southwest Downtown. Anyway, these are all development districts, and all the development is, uh, been a big sponsor on these. See, house has been big on the department, landscaping, roads, utilities, pretty much everything you could need. And one in Downtown Boulder takes care of the Pearl Street Walk. One in Blackhawk that reconstructed Main Street, from the pipes under the street all the way to the tops of the light poles. Uh, if you've seen the lights on Highway one nineteen, which grew out of town, that BID actually financed those initially. Central Cities BID built the Southern Access Highway, which is a four-lane gigantic road. They're not proposing anything like that for La Puerta, but it gives an idea of the type of public infrastructure these districts can do. And that's, that's one thing I should touch on. All right, one of the things is that successful bids spin off projects around them. So you've seen all the development around Park Meadows, for example, you've seen the development around Downtown Denver, including what's going on at Rhino, which is right next door. The Fiddler's BID is actually just the inside of a D, there's a D-shaped parcel there with the parking garage. And Fiddler's BID has had quite a bit of development around it. Is the BID really responsible for it? No, the BID allowed for that gigantic parking garage out there, which is all fuel development in the area. So it's ancillary businesses, those ones outside of the district boundary, provide benefits to the city in terms of additional employment, tax revenue, and just plain economic activity. So that's what we're sort of posting here, and that's why we want the BID to be put in place. GID would not work as well for a number of reasons, as I explained, but I think those BIDs really do help foster economic development.
Do you have any examples of GIDs that would, you know, support your argument that they're not as good as the BIDs?
Well, let's see, um, they tend to be single-purpose projects, for one thing, I mean, they tend to be rifle shots. So for example, I worked on two in Denver, out of the three that are in Denver total. One's on Fourteenth Street, which is called the Ambassador Street in Denver, and it's the one that Blue Bear is on. Blue Bear's on Fourteenth Street, right in front of the Civic Center, um, that is Convention Center. All right, and it did the, uh, the streetscape, the large signs, all together now, you've seen that all together now, they did that. Uh, along with the pedestrian lighting, the empty benches that look like the School of Mines logo, which I think is really kind of fun because they're in front of UC Denver, it's got the School of Mines logo on it. And it worked reasonably well. And the reason why it worked reasonably well is the city was gonna put ten million dollars in that street anyway, out of the better Denver bonds that they did years ago. The property owner put in another four million, and so the money came into the project, and Public Works then ran that project, and it worked fine. The other one I'm familiar with is, um, the Rhino GID. So they put a BID and a GID in almost the same dollars, the BID's bigger than the GID, but they're pretty much in the same area. The BID was for these business promotional things and ongoing maintenance types of stuff, pretty much throughout the entire area. The GID was to issue three million dollars worth of bonds to go with the city's twenty-seven million to make Brighton Boulevard nicer. So Brighton Boulevard now has streetscape, it's got a really nice bike lane in there, and all this other stuff that it wouldn't have if the property owners hadn't gone together to put that in. Public Works Department in Denver, again, built the whole project, this is one in creative system. And I think they worked pretty well for that. Here, in La Puerta, you not only have the need for coordinating improvements, you also have to coordinate with whatever the private sector's doing. And that's really hard to do by, I think, first city council, not to discourage city council alone, but trying to get that coordination and making sure you get things timed correctly is a real effort when you're talking about a project of this size. So even though I can't really say, oh my gosh, BID's a cow, because they're not. The fact is, I think you can coordinate considerably better and get everything done on a much faster track when you're talking about BID, coupled with the private development.
Do you have one other speaker that's gonna come up before?
Yes, we do.
We've got about ten minutes, we'll have a five-minute break, uh, for next session.
Deputy Mayor, City Council, where are you guys? When I first fell in love with Trinidad in the eighties, there was little industry. I came and went with shock that such a beautiful place would exist without or with very little industry. I would walk down the streets and I was amazed, it was like going back into town, but there were empty buildings. I remember walking up Commercial Street and seeing Fisher's Peak in the distance, and like saying, what in the heck is wrong? How can you have a town so beautiful with no industry? In the nineties, we saw the oil boom and it was exciting for an economic dying town, but it was not a healthy way for Trinidad to grow up, having only one main industry to fund its town. Our downtown, the First National Bank has done a beautiful job of keeping their building renovated. And then Lonnie and Vivica showed up, and they brightened our downtown, the center building and commercial in Maine, highlighting our town. Slowly, business started to grow. Slowly, business started to grow. I've fought for the last twenty years at the state of Colorado level intensely, and many of us have fought through the last ten years to pay attention to the city of Trinidad because it is the state of Colorado's southern doorway. We have fought and the state now started to care about the city of Trinidad. They started to care about their doorway. As when you cross a doorway into someone's home and what, that reflects to the guests that are entering that home. The state has now recognized how important we are and we are now paying attention to us. But we have to pay attention to ourselves again or be at the whim of asking for help from others. The largest employment that we have built up in Trinidad area is hospitality. Out of all the hotels and restaurants in the area, we are the largest employer in the city of Trinidad. And we have done that without any help from outsiders. The La Puerta Development adds a hospitality industry to not just being able to open a hotel, but open a hotel that sits on our doorway at the Commercial Street exit. That will feed approximately on our slow times, 2,500 to 6,000 people per month with the additional people of like five an hour, 100 extra a day. That will bring the tally up to 10,000 guests a month. Yeah, you all sit here and wonder about our restaurants and what we can do, but we have restaurants here that are struggling too, that are private restaurants that would welcome an extra 200 people a day going down and eating at their restaurants. Helping also our local businesses and the taxes to the city of Trinidad by them having. So we need a sewer line to hook up to. A sewer line that is currently defunct and ready to fall apart to 33% of the housing of city of Trinidad. If this hotel is never built, we still have to replace the sewer line with a cost to our community and our health, to any other future business with hospitality on that corner. There are projects around that have happened that the city had no current benefit from, only hopefully future benefit, as the Cougar Canyon project that everybody associates a large development project to that we need to talk about. So Cougar Canyon was really developed on, hopefully, it would help this town. Not that it currently did while it was being built in any way. The La Puerta Development will help from day one. First, and most importantly to our restaurants, our sewer lines that are needed on the north side of town. Number two, the increase in development of our Commercial Street exit 14 gateway that will display to all the traffic going up and down the highway, because it's not hit out somewhere, it's right on the highway, that we are inspired to have economic growth and things are happening in Trinidad. The interest in itself should be worth it to stop and see what is going on. And number three, once that hotel is up and running, it will provide a minimum of 50 jobs and the full development will hire far more than 100 people. Additional tax monies will help the city-state lodging, real estate taxes. At the La Quinta right now, besides the hundred of thousands of dollars that I do to the state and city and lodging tax that's paid, I pay $88,000 in tax for that piece of property that I'm sure did not, was not the tax rate prior to that hotel being built. We looked to other developers that have had interest in Trinidad, Colorado. No one has had as much care and concern to help instigate business for our city as the Chino family. Mount Carmel is a project of over $12 million, lights up our entryway on Highway 12 into the city compared to the horrible way it was falling down. Also now add what our hospital and the services were like before Mount Carmel was built that nobody really addresses. Our hospital was falling apart. Having Mount Carmel built and being run now by John Sam Stevens, who grew up here, who has 13 other hospital care agencies up in Denver area, who hasn't won the better award for the state of Colorado. Not alone other awards, has given competition to our healthcare system where now it's proud for retired people to come here and move because of how that sets. Think of Chino Park and how it was, now it is a central meeting place for the farmer's market and walks on the Riverwalk. All the work that's been done on Commercial Street, the reconstruction of numerous buildings, and now soon the completion of Sister Blandina Park and how that opens up the downtown area and makes beautification to walk down there. There's probably never a time in 100 years that we have given as much help and opportunity to help ourselves right now by not putting ourselves on line, but having a developer that cares. We are trying to add to building the heart of the city. When you build something with heart, it has a different feeling. I built the La Quinta with heart and I'm humbled and grateful to say that I've helped most, if not all, festivals in the city by this and Denver. Most of you don't know, but my staff knows and they get upset about it at times, but I have donated over $300,000 in rooms from La Quintas since we've opened in the last 10 years. And I have donated with the three hotels that I have run, over a million dollars to the festivals in this city over the last 25 years. One of the most exciting challenges I have is to be able to expand in our festivals and help with the downtown area, primarily the Blues Fest, which is the largest hotel room draws that we have. I want to talk personally about the bid and the JID because I know, I lived through the Cougar Canyon stuff and I lived through everything that they did. They had a metro district, they did not have a bid or a JID. I could go on and tell you that this current developer is not doing anything he was doing for himself. This is the place of his family and birth. He was helping and is passionate about it and sometimes goes way out there and pushes everybody that's on his team, which drives everybody crazy because this is his hometown and he's trying to do as much as he can. I want to, I want to, I want to love and help and I beg all of you for us to work together as a team so that we can make this happen. I believe with the bid, if we put on TURA, if we put on Urban Renewal, if we put on a city council member, that this will be run a whole lot different than anything that anybody imagines. This is where the benefit, for the gateway, for our doorway to the city of Trinidad. And you guys have a big job in front of you, but I got to tell you, this project is one of the biggest community service projects that I've ever been involved in that will help the city of Trinidad. And when I see all the work that needs to be done just on that piece of property, just to make it happen, there's not a developer that would do that. There's nobody that would do that. I've reached out to my hotel friends and they say, wow, that's a beautiful piece of property and everything, but it's far too much to work. And he's willing to do that. So thank you all for listening. And one more thing to tell you and it has nothing to do with anything else. Well, it does kind of, and I'm kind of worried about it, but I have to tell you. I was filming with Hilton, the architect of builders, yesterday. And during that period of time, I found out that the building that we are now farming out to Denver, that they got passed the 2018 building codes. And I want to tell you that Colorado Springs and Denver has not even approved that. The building codes increase cost to any private builder, including space to create project and everything else that will it take place as of Thursday if a moratorium is not put on it. 10 to 25% of any building. That would be encouraged by a building, a builder, a building company, a building at the state level because they actually make more money on it. Locally, you are hurting, if we can do anything to put a moratorium, we are hurting any other developers from coming in because all up and down I-25, they have not done it. Trinidad just did it. So I do want to put that out there. And I didn't want to do that today, but it's Thursday. So a moratorium or special meeting will need to be called to either give it 90 days so you can relook at what it is compared to the rest of the state. And look, all you guys, I'm not here because of any reason, but I love the city of Trinidad. You guys are all here because you love the city of Trinidad. And we just have to work together so we can make this the place that our children want to stay and that we can all stay in it, not turn into what it was in the 1980s.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Let's go ahead and take a quick recess, take about four or five minutes and come back. We'll start a regular session.